November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, we'll prepare one. I would stand and I want to ask that. Don't release the flag yet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of Wichita, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Big from the end, release prayer.
Our will heavenly father, we just give you thanks for this wonderful day, Lord. We pray, Lord, that the decisions we make tonight will better our citizens, better our community, and better our city as a whole. We give you thanks for all things in Jesus' name.
All right, just to update on a few of the projects like I always do. The water project is getting almost near the end. I know I said that last month. It seems like once we're in the final stage, it's slowed down a little bit. It's all done except for six. There's six customers that's still on the old line that haven't been switched over to the new line for various reasons. So they've got to come back and do that. And there's probably maybe six or eight places that still needs dressed up and straw and grass seeds sold. But I've been over in there a lot. I've talked to a lot of people. Everyone that I've talked to just about has been satisfied with the way their property was left. It's good or better than when we found it all. Plus, they got a new street. And in Mitch's neighborhood, we've got a lot of new sidewalk.
On the perps?
Well, not in your, not in front of his house.
No, I did it on.
His was good, so isn't it? But up that street, those people had, I just felt like they finished late for ever. It was an old concrete street. The water was in the street, and we had dug it up four hundred times through the years. And then it just passed back with dirt and mud. And the sidewalks were busted off pieces. The part between the sidewalk and the street was busted off pieces. And so this gave us an opportunity to do it all. We changed the water, new blacktop, and then new sidewalks where it was really bad and dangerous. Very dangerous for about following. So we got a lot of that done. If you haven't been over there, go look at Rice Street, Rice Avenue. And then all the streets, Boone, Blacky, Heart of Pike, Rice, Sycamore, Wilson, Wilson Court. All those resurfaced with new asphalt. Probably the first time decades that Wilson and then now, like he had got it since I've been here. And most of it stayed, we just had to redo a little bit of it. But the street between in front of the, we all know it as the Catholic store. It was really bad up there when we got it done. So it really looks nice over there. The other project, the signs, as you know, you all approved some time back. We paid for with close average money. It seemed like to me it's been forever getting it done. Sometimes I feel like I'm pushing the rope. But they were, they are nice. They've got two up out of the three. They still have some work to do with sealing around the bottoms. And the one out by the car wash, they're going to repair some of the mortar and stuff that they damaged a little bit. And then we're going to paint brick to kind of match the sign better. More like, more like the one up here. The one down at the birdhouse, they had to completely disassemble the thing and take posts all the way to the ground. So they've got to come back and put it back together and put it on. So we still like that. Back there, these are real nice lights that look like the light on the, on the logo, on the rediscovered logo. If you notice, they didn't put the light on there because it kind of threw the sign. It left so much blank space, they had to make it so tall to put it up there. So we're going to put a real light on top of the sign. So they kind of mimic the, they're really, really nice. So we'll get them on there next week. I finally, after we've done all that work on the stage at the park, I hope you all have seen that. One of the, one of the big, other than it just needed done, it looked horrible. And it's so much more functional now. But another good thing is it let us have an area that can be locked up. And so now we've got camera system. And Lockon gave us a real good deal on the inlet. I think it was six months free and then reduced right after that. And so we got the cameras, and I think it will solve the vandalism problem. Or at least if it don't, we'll know who did it. So I mean, before, there was just no place to put them. You know, you can't just set cameras out in the street. So now we've got a place locked up where the control panel is. And then we can have cameras over the whole hall. And so I think it's, it's good safety for kids, you know, everything. So tickled to get that done. The other project, the sewer project, we'll talk about when we get into the, into the meeting, but we got to vote on that. All right, so on old business, I have a motion. We approve the minutes for a special meeting, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Shaker.
Second.
By Mr., who was it?
Parsons.
Oh. Nolan, all in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Number five approves second reading of two thousand ten oh six, creating a franchise for the operation and maintenance of a cable system in the city of Weeden, Kentucky. Setting forth conditions accompanying to grant a franchise and providing for regulation and use of said system. I feel like I've rode that horse, so I could count the hairs on its back. Does anybody have any more questions about, this is just the second reading. It'll be the final. If you do, now's the time to do it because after tonight it will be, it will be adopted as law. Does anybody have any questions about, I hear a motion. We approve the second reading.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Robinson.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Nolan. Okay, talk.
Shaker, yes. Parsons?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Castle?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Burton?
Yes.
Number six, final acceptance of AEP franchise. I'm still a little bit confused about this, so I'll run by Bud's office this evening. I think I understand it better now. Bud, do you want to add anything to this solely?
Well, no, we, we put out the ordinance initially and adopted it for me to sell, which I bid, and surprise, surprise, there was only one bidder. And they submitted the bid letter, gave a chat that I don't know if it's in your package or not. So we need to approve the bid. It was the only bidder. And then concurrent with that, they were wanting to, an act, has an act that's second ordinance approving that bid. This is probably my fault, but it didn't, it did not get on the agenda. The final acceptance of the franchise bid did make it on there, and frankly, it was kind of confusing.
Yeah.
Having all this around. So what I would need from council is to approve the final acceptance of the AEP franchise bid and then the ordinance. And I think, Mayor, you had some concern about some of the language.
Yeah.
But we couldn't act on it tonight anyway.
Right.
So I will try to get with Wendell Roberts tomorrow and address some of those concerns. And then Kathy, if you could put it on the agenda for a first reading at the next meeting.
So we'd like, we're going to have three readings for an ordinance. Then we're going to accept the bid, the final acceptance of the franchise offer from them. And then we're going to pass another ordinance that sort of puts them at the top of the other ordinance. Just inserts them in the other ordinance.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Because it was kind of confusing. And you did call down here and talk to Rita about putting it on there, and I wasn't here. And so it was confusing when I got back and we was trying to, because we thought, you know, the ordinance was already passed.
And I probably not fault.
Well, here's my point, though. I had a little bit of a problem, and the only reason I didn't say anything about this at the last council meeting was because you was doing it. And you're our counsel, and I have all the faith in you. But I did not like the fact that I carried in here a document that had the first reading already done on it, and then it was pushed aside, and their document came out, and that's what we signed. You see what I'm saying? I had a little bit of a problem with that.
I did, I did not know, but I did not realize that.
Yes. And so I really would like for you to go over the one that is in the book that was passed and published to make sure everything's okay. Because what we signed and put in the book and published was not the one. It's the official, but it's not the one I carried in this meeting for the first reading.
It should have just, should have just been a date change. Remember there was a date change?
I want you to look at it, though.
I'll look at it. Remind me. But I don't think that, there might have been some minor changes.
I tell you what.
I think what happened on it, and you correct me on this, Kathy, but your memory is better than mine, is I think that maybe we didn't have a meeting or something, and we had to change the date.
I think that was what it was. But I'd really like for you to look at it.
I'll look at it, but I, I think that's the only thing, and I'm not concerned.
I'm a stickler about, you know, this is the ordinance we passed the first reading. I want the same.
We had a regular meeting, and it had a date already in it. And then council couldn't come at night.
But I think, but that's all it is, Kathy, and I think that's correct. Minor change like that, I'm not concerned about.
Yeah, and I think it was just a date change.
I'm not concerned about that, but remind me, I'll do that.
But it just brought it up again, thinking of another ordinance. So my other question is, the second ordinance, is it going to benefit the city any, or is that just for AEP's benefit?
That's for their benefit. The mayor and I had a discussion about that. There were parts of that he was concerned about. I told the AEP lawyer, I didn't know if see the need for a second reading. If we accepted the bid, which I'll send, we will.
I wonder if we can get them to pay for the ad. It's gonna be three hundred dollars, you know, we want rid of it.
Yeah.
Because it's not going to benefit the city any.
Well, I'll ask.
You know, it's hard to do a business sometimes, but you know.
We've paid the bucks.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair.
All right, just to review, I just want to review the, the bid proposal or the final acceptance that you'd be accepting tonight. The letter has got AEP's logo on top of it. And essentially, the, the heart of this thing was, we're doing it for ten years instead of twenty. And we're doing the same amount, twenty-five percent rebate on all the streetlights. The big difference was, before, the only streetlights they was paying us for was the old-fashioned kind that hang on the wooden poles over the street. Any of the black streetlights that have a streetlight on top of the post, they were not paying us the rebate. So none of Meadowbrook, none of that was we getting any rebate on. Now, this new language, as you see, it says including post-op lots. And it, there are one hundred and fifteen post-op lots currently. So there's going to be another hundred and fifteen streetlights we're getting a rebate on that we weren't getting before. That was the big sticker with me. Also, it's got language that says if we add twenty more streetlights, they got to pay on the twenty new we add. So anytime we add, it does say it's our responsibility to notify them that we've added, but they will pay for the future one. And then also, if you remember back a few years ago, when AEP started putting the riders on everybody's bill, to your house, it's high enough, but the riders they put on the city, because our bills are high, is enormous. And the language before said they would pay us twenty-five percent rebate minus local taxes and fuel surcharges. But in reality, when the riders came along, they just deducted the riders too and didn't pay us twenty-five percent of the riders. That wasn't what the contract said. So this one says that riders are included. So if our rider's three hundred dollars, we're going to at least get twenty-five percent of that every month back that we weren't getting before. So I'm happy with the language, and the only thing I ask Bud to do differently is if we're going to pass a new ordinance that inserts their name on the top of it, I'd like for this language to be in the ordinance too. So we can do that next time. But as far as accepting this, their proposal, I'm fine with it. It's exactly what we discussed in person. It's exactly what we discussed here that night. And they have a lot of hoops to jump through with Public Service Commission. So they have to send all this to Public Service Commission. If, if anybody has any questions, be free to try to answer them. Where we stand right now, we just need to accept their offer because they're the only offer. There's no other power company going to come here and do power. And then next meeting, we'll have another ordinance that's just blurred in with language with their name in it as well. And hopefully, this will take them. I have motion to accept their offer.
I make motion.
Motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second by Mr. Robinson. Any more discussion, question? All in favor, signify.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Set bid for sewer project. I want to explain that to you, so there should have been some confusion, but I think there's even some confusion going on about that. Essentially, we've done this project a little bit backwards, but I think it's great. I think it's the way projects should be done. In other words, instead of just going and saying, how much money can we get? And then taking that money and spending it, we said, here's our problem. Let's get enough money to, Mitch was being hoard then, let's get enough money to do the camera work, to run cameras to our system and see where the problem is and see exactly what we need to fix. Instead of just starting digging because you got two million dollars, three million dollars, whatever. So we did that. They identified the problems. At that point, there was money in that initial bucket to also pay the engineer to design the project to fix the problems that were identified. And so we made it through all that. They designed the project. The engineer's estimates of the project was about three million dollars, okay? And we had available, already approved through KIA, that amount, or two point nine nine eight million dollars, product three million dollars. So if you understand what I'm saying, I took the engineer's estimate, which was about two point nine million dollars, went to the board, got approved for that amount of money to do the project. Then we come back and advertised for bids, and we advertised the bid. We had five bids, and all bids were considerably above the three million dollars. So we made a few small adjustments to the project, rebid it, and the second time, we only got the one bidder. And it's still about five hundred thousand dollars over budget. So where you standing right now, you've got, you've got one bidder agreeing to do the project for three and a half million dollars. You approve for three million dollars, of which we don't have to pay back half of it. So it's like a million, a half dollar, three grand. And then we'll be paying payments back on the other at point two five percent interest over twenty years you can't beat. And so as I look for options to solve the problem, because we've come too far to not do a project, we need, we've got to do a project. So as I look for options, we've made all the adjustments in the project we can. The engineers decided to bid this project lump sum, meaning if the contractor takes the bid, he took it off. He can't opt. Whereas like water project, we bid it nine hundred feet at ten dollars a foot sale, okay? Then if they get into the project and they come up and say, well, it really wasn't nine hundred foot there, it was only eight hundred and eighty, you got a little extra money. Or if they say, well, it went over, you got to pay more. But this project is lump sum. It just, this stuff has to be done with this project. So there was no flexibility. And so I talked to KIA multiple times, and it was like, we have two options. One, the executive director can sign her name and give us a ten percent increase on the funding. That still leaves us about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars short. She said, we've got the money, we've got extra money this year. She's like, we want to do your project, but if you, if you have to have more than ten percent, you've got to do the paperwork again, come back to the board again, like I did the other time. So I've got two or three other options. I'm working with the state to see if we can get them to loosen up on some specifications with stone and stuff, because that's what's drove that price to improve. But if not, she feels confident. And she said quite honestly, Mayor, she said, we expected it to come in higher than this. She said, every project across the state, the bids are coming in higher than what the engineers have. Said, there's that much work going on, so contractors can just about pick and choose what they want to do right now, there's so much work. So it's just a product of the time we're living in, she said. She said, it's very, very common. So I'm working at two angles. One, to try to get the state to change specs a little bit. And two, we know she'll give us a ten percent increase, but more than likely, we've already done all the paperwork to ask for the increase, the full increase, and I will go to the board December fifth and get approval for that. Now, the reason I put it on here is, what we would like to do, and I've had Bud check this out, it's kind of a unique situation because we only got one bidder and things. But what we want to do is have you all accept the bid of three million, four hundred and fifty thousand from Frederick Mayes, the only bid we got, no other bidder. And accept that pending approval of our funding on December fifth. Unless something blew up with the funding, then on December fifth, we'll be ready to roll. So we've got the bid accepted, we have the funding. And I, I really don't foresee any problem from the way I talk to them. Any questions? I know it's a lot to talk about. You already finished the meeting right now.
Mitch knows.
Thirteen foot of gravel, no ten foot of gravel, use number eights, number thirteens. It's a lot. But it's going to be a great project. It's going to be a long painstaking project, but it's got to be done. I mean, all of that stormwater on this end of town is going to the sewer project. We cannot solve the problem without fixing it. And this is an opportunity to get it fixed half free. Half, so we're going to be talking about one point seven five million dollars free money. So hard to beat. Do I have a motion? We approve the bid?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Parsons, second, by Mr. Nolan. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the other thing I would ask you, we make sure you get the amount that's subject to approval.
Subject to funding, approval.
But Mayor asks for approval pending funding, December the fifth. And that's when you'll find out.
And that'll be before we have a meeting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number eight, declare surplus property. If you all remember, you've done voted on the new trucks, and we entered into agreement with Enterprise to provide us vehicles with a fleet maintenance program. The idea was, you bought them at severely government discount rates. You drive them about three years or about forty to fifty thousand miles, and then they sell them. And because you got to buy them at wholesale price, but you sell them at retail price, you actually end up almost driving the truck for free once you get the money back. So it's time to trade those out and get new ones. And as we sit and go through them, the trucks are in such good shape, it's very tempting to say, well, let's just keep and pay them off. But if we do, we'll be back in the same shape.
Yeah.
Three, four years down the road, you'll have everything here with a hundred thousand miles on it, without the money to replace them. And that was the whole purpose of doing it. So I say we move forward. You all done voted on that a few months back, but I didn't realize it at the time. It was like, Harold, are you going to get two thousand nineteen trucks? If so, you're just getting leftover here and there that we can find because they're not making anymore. So we couldn't special order what we needed. Or are you going to get twenty twenty trucks? And so twenty twenty trucks are being made right now, but would not ship to us for seventeen more weeks. So we're still seventeen weeks away from getting all the, one, we had an emergency for the sewer project, and they found one to deal with. All but that will be still March, April getting them.
How many trucks have we got now?
If you cannot get any, you've got to buy. Now, we're not going to trade any because it's got such low mileage.
It's a life brand.
And it's got so much equipment on it that if it have to come off, it don't make sense. But they are wanting to buy another. Probably station two month for Ron's, what's that name, floor? Is about, it's got two hundred thousand miles on it. It's a nine and a something mile, it's shoddy. I mean, they take good care of it. It looks good, but it's just following apart on the end.
We're just going to exchange the.
Yeah.
City workers.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And those trucks, like Martin's, supposedly, they give you an estimate, like they sell Martin's, we should get eight thousand dollars cash.
Now, we just still want to get the hookups or the plows and everything on the.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we got orders.
Are we going to keep the, the old plows?
We're keeping the same plows.
Just, just cut on that.
Because they sent me the first quote to have new plows, and I was like, we don't need new plows. So the only thing they got to do is put the track back into the truck. Our salt spreader and plows are ready to go. They're already on the truck, ready. And since we mentioned plows and salt, you might as well tell you, we kind of had a little bit of confusion last year with the state and ended up with a lot of extra salt that we shouldn't have had. But we had it, so we, it was supposed to be, well, if you don't use it, you don't have to pay for it. Well, then they started saying, no, you need to pay for it. So we just paid for it, but we shouldn't have to buy any this year. So our salt for this year is already paid and in the barn.
We will probably be asking for a budget adjustment because of that.
Because of that. But we won't typically, in about March or April, we'd be paying for the salt we use in the winter, so we've already got to pay. So we won't, we won't owe them. But when we get those new trucks, we're going to be able to get rid of a bunch of junk things. So I was going to ask you all to declare these here surplus. And I don't know that we'll do it right this week or nothing, but in the next few weeks, we're going to advertise these for bid. And it takes a while by the time we put them on GovDings. And it has to run for so long and all that, and then they come and pick them up. So it takes a while to get them sorted. And I give you a list there. As you can see, it's a ninety-nine, four F two fifty, two thousand five, fifteen hundred, and two thousand. So one's twenty-one years old, one's nineteen years old, and one's fifty years old.
You say you give us a list of them?
Yes.
Oh, I mean, no, no, I thought you already gave us one.
No, we didn't have the list. We're going to pass it down.
Oh, okay. Kathy, can you get that list in a minute?
I'm sorry?
Can you get that list in a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think really you pretty well covered it. Don't want to read the paper.
Two, two seconds. Just, you know, what they were forward, you know, they're worn out. Then we're going to put them on that electronic side.
We have them.
Yeah, we had to first declare a surplus statewide. You can look at it. And then I think the public auction online seems to be the best. We get so much better money because you're getting the whole world to bid on them instead of ten people in Orange County. We've used it before, and it's been pretty successful. So I have a motion, we declare these three trucks surplus.
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Mitch. Second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any comments from council?
Someone want to hand?
They got it done that way.
And that's the, yeah. Yeah, do I have a comment from the council? Oh, yeah.
Since we wasn't able to meet before this, I went ahead and did it, and then I was just going to bring it up at the meeting. But we have a police officer, Sergeant Ed Corl. He has basically had a twenty-eight year career in law enforcement in Orange County. Most of it here at the city, I think a year or two was with the county. But he began in nineteen ninety-one as a police officer. They had him a little retirement reception.
They had him a little retirement reception a couple, three weeks ago, and Lisa was there. And so I went and presented him with this, and I had to, there was no way to get it to the meeting before. So we just wanted to admit it into the record that, uh, we give him a proclamation and kind of as a, uh, recognizing for all of his years of service. And then actually, you know, ended up ending his career with an accident, car accident. And then as Dr. Little joke, we declared February twenty-first each year Sergeant Ed Corl Day. And Louisa, the police chief, has to take him for one because his number was two, two, one. So February twenty.
But all the city has always wanted to declare it a holiday and we want the day off.
They wanted a holiday. I don't think they're going there, but, uh, so.
Yeah, me too.
And so we gave him his proclamation framed, and he was really tickled with it. And, uh, so he's working toward his final paperwork in, in retirement, so.
Is that it?
We appreciate him. Any, uh, comments from the audience? Welcome. Glad to have you. Thank you. First time you've been to one, actually?
Second.
Second, okay. I missed, uh, my wife ain't never been there. Ned? She did with Teddy. She's, she's never come since I've been. She bored me enough at home. All right, anything else? Bud, did you have anything?
Just very briefly, pending litigation, our executive section.
Okay.
I think about less than five minutes.
I have a motion, we go with executive section, pending litigation.
Second.